Stand up and introduce. And if you stand over there, I think the camera will find you. Great.
Look here, Michelle's here, okay. Not a big thing tonight, but something that occurred to me is I was looking through all the right area and buffering and everything last month. I got to thinking, I guess it was the time of year that made the things this. But all salt they put on the road. You know, it's eventually that salt solution or a large part of the nature play down the streets or not out where water goes. And I just wondered, all the concern about these enormously wide buffers. The joining sometimes creeps that I can step over. Seem to be so kind of that requirement seems so out of proportion with with what we just sort of literally accept. Which is the runoff from the roads. And I just want to call to the zoning commission's attention that. Maybe they want to just rethink some of those boundary dimensions. In terms of. Other things that are happening which are outside of the purview of zoning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, it just for everybody's benefit, there was in last week or so, I believe. A great article on the issue of salt and roads in the future, our local paper. Um, that talked about um. All of the concerns with salping getting into the water sheds. And how there's a lot of effort now to put back unsolved and to develop alternatives. To salt, so you might be interested in seeing that.
I might be, thank you for pointing that out to me. Um, I am pessimistic than anything really come out of the end of the day, people don't want to tell you what.
A lot of communities are using sand these days, areas to, a lot of communities in certain areas are using sand rather than salt, so well, there are alternatives. Well, just thought you might be interested because you brought up the issue.
Yeah.
I understand.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to privilege of the floor? If you're online, just raise your hand. Hearing that, I will move on. Um. First of all, I will say that I realized that I um put the date today on the agenda as January third, twenty twenty two. Because I really would like to go back in time, but I'm going to change that. And um. Can I have someone like to move approval of the minutes of the December sixth meeting? Thank you, Ernie and Barb. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those are approved. Okay, Tim Barry is not in town. To give a council report, Mark, would you, is there anything you'd like to say?
Hmm, uh. I guess I'll just say that um we are gonna, the town board meetings. Tomorrow's the first meeting of the year, the organizational resolutions, we're planning to schedule the town board meetings on the first and third Wednesdays. Of the month at seven P M.
Okay.
So. That's, that's all.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
Okay, so there are topics that we are going to discuss tonight. And those include um. Let me get my list. Um. Residential secondary use businesses. Reformulation of how we approach density in the ag rural district. Concept and details of exemption from the site plan review that we talked about. Um, at the last meeting and said we would bring back up again, and a reader's aid box on conservation subdivisions. That um Bill is going to talk about a little bit, it's not quite done. Is there anything else that we want to talk about tonight to add to this agenda?
I think it's a webinar of conserving the agriculture in the basis of development.
Uh, the Zoom, would I help him today?
Today, third January, fifth year.
Right, tomorrow. Oh, I see you, Nan. Yes, hi, Nan.
Yeah, no, I just saw this afternoon, I went through, back through the flurry of uh emails that came through in December. And some of the things that. Were not on your agenda, but little, little things like um. Adding cemetery. Moving the multifamily dwelling from residential to commercial. Um. And. The development dwelling unit versus development unit discussion that was taking place. I don't think decisions had been made on those.
What was the last one, Nan? I missed it.
Um, that was the point that Ernie had brought up was, I'm trying to remember the background on it, but it was. Whether we call the density dwelling unit per acre or development unit per acre.
I think we.
Right, and that, that's a, a, a big topic, I think we'll, yeah, we'll definitely cover that one.
Okay, that's on the list, I didn't know that was in this list.
Okay.
I guess that was what you meant by reformulating the approach to density. Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Okay.
So then it was just really in the emails that looked like cemetery and um. Just moving the listing of multifamily dwelling from residential down to, you know, make sure it looks, it's shown as a commercial use.
Farm cemeteries, multifamily dwellings.
Alright, alright, so you're adding those as something to discuss tonight, right, Jean?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay, so we will start with residential secondary use businesses. And you proposed a definition on.
Right. And I can share that screen if people would like.
That would be great.
Okay, so let me share a screen. And check the right one. There, that's one. Alright, so there's the definition, I don't know how legible that is to those of you there. Um, but basically it parallels the definition that was given for, it was, is used for a, a, a home occupation, a minor home occupation. But the differences are um. Uh, I do point out that, you know, in, in the definition, it says. Uh, that in distinction to a minor home occupation, the enterprise is conducted by a business owner operator who does not. Reside in the premises or adjacent properties. That's what, how it differs from a minor home occupation. Um, but uh, I did, it also called for all like other family participants who reside on the premises, but that doesn't apply, so I took out a sentence about that. And then uh. Yeah, that's pretty much um what, what I think are the differences. It's basically a minor occupation. That is run by someone who um basically is renting the space from the actual homeowner. The point is that the property is a residential property. It looks and acts and tastes like a residential property. However, there is a minor commercial activity taking place that does not. Um, you know, alter the character of the property or the neighborhood, and that's the intent behind a residency, residential secondary business use.
And this is undertaken with the full knowledge of the owner of the property.
I'm assuming that it's not someone on the back corner, right? Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, again, I'm, yes, I agree, Ernie.
I just, I thought I remembered that in your, your, your definition, but maybe not.
Yeah, I don't think I, yeah, I'm assuming that they are indeed renting, that, you know, that it obviously is in um. You know, uh, something that the owners, you know, was renting the space, so they're doing it voluntarily. And know about it.
So would this be as a permitted use or a site plan or a special use permit? How would this go through?
I'm proposing this as a permitted use. It is just like a minor home occupation.
Yeah.
Um. And, you know, and that's a worthwhile point to discuss. You know, I think part of the reason why a home occupation is permitted. You know, there's a thing that someone's going to take good care of their own property, and this is not, you know, it's not something that's a big commercial enterprise. Now we have someone who's renting the parcel, but I mean, assuming since someone is still living there. They will keep track of this person using their, their property and make sure they don't abuse the property, but. Uh, it's an open question, but I, I was proposing it as a permitted use.
But does it say in there that someone is living there?
It's, it says, uh, that's a good, it says, ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It. It does not, I think, I have to be careful, that's a good point. It just says that the. I think it's a residential property. And it has every residence on it, and I think we should, we should say that, that the. So what if someone is renting a house and then. Can the person renting the house then rent out the barn to someone else to run a, 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 a business? That's one question. If someone is renting the house, can their landlord rent out the barn? I assume the answer to that one is yes. But yes, I would want someone living on the property. I think to qualify as a residential secondary use business, someone must be using the property as a full-time residence. Um, I don't know if we, how to put that in there, but I think that's a good, a good point. That's what I feel. How, how does the rest of the question feel?
Uh, yeah, I agree with that for sure.
So if we inserted the word residential after, in the first sentence, under after non-farm related residential business activity. Would that suffice?
Well, no, I think we need to say uh somewhere. But you know, it says that it's secondary or subordinate use of the dwelling for living purposes, and I think we need to say, or maybe we should say the property, we should need to say. That someone really is residing there. Because putting the word residential up here doesn't do that.
Okay, so. The, then if you went to the second sentence where it says. Uh, or the third sentence. Is conducted by a business owner operator who does not reside on the premises or in a adjacent property. And then put in a semicolon and however. Uh, either the property owner or renter resides on the property.
So I, I'm confused. So what you're trying to do is. Allow someone to rent a home or like a residence. But use it as a business but not live there? Because if they live there, that's a home occupation.
Right, so, so let's take an example. Someone is living in a nice big old house on a property, but this was a farm property, there, there's a barn out back. They want to rent that out for someone to use for a minor business. They're not going to own the business there, the property is not going to own the business or run the business. But they want to generate some income for themselves. Is it okay, and that's, this is definitely trying to make that okay, for a small innocuous business that has a tiny sign, right? We have, you know, limits on how big a sign can be, et cetera, that essentially looks just like a home occupa-, a minor home occupation. And the only difference is, is again, the property is a residential property, someone's living there. That, that it is possible for the, and for the sake of argument, the person living there who owns the property to rent out. An outbuilding or even their basement or their garage for someone to do. Something.
Yes, so as I understand.
Cut hair.
It could be the property owner. Who is renting out a garage or an outbuilding. Or it could be someone who is renting the whole property. And then rents out a garage, et cetera. So you could, for instance, I could own a property and rent the house to someone and rent the garage or the, an outbuilding or a barn to someone else. As long as someone was living in the house. As a resident, someone else could be in the, in the barn. Running a business, a small business.
And, and I, I think it's worth discussing, I am okay with saying, no, you actually have to be the person living in the house. Uh, you can't be renting the house to one person and the barn to someone else. Uh, I, I think it's an open question about, you know, the character of the neighborhood and what preserves it better. I don't know the right answer to that. So I think it's a worthwhile point to discuss. Whether we should allow someone to rent out all parts of their property, one, rent the house out to one person and the garage to someone else to do a business.
This is sort of, this is an issue that was brought up in our last um public um information meeting.
Right, right, by someone who said, you know, there are cases, or at least a case, where something that's basically a home business. Just doesn't happen to be run by the person who owns that property.
Right.
And this person, you know, I think would like to be able to continue to do that kind of rental activity.
Well, I, I just want to clarify that a home occupation is not limited to owner occupied, it, it, it's limited to. The operator occupied.
Exactly.
Right, in this case, the operator does not occupy the premises at all. They just come in, open the door, do their shop business and leave.
Right, yep.
So this is somebody who couldn't live in, God help us, and come over. And do it. Got it?
Is, is there a, um. A financial trigger that keeps it as a residential business?
It's not a financial trigger, it's a minor home business, which is, what is it, three employees, if I remember correctly? Three full-time equivalent employees.
In addition, in addition, the owner operator.
Right, it's not an amount.
It has to be secondary to the residential.
Right.
Right.
I think that's.
That's important.
Right, I mean, I mean. The fact that it says, you know, secondary.
Right.
What about if you changed? Where it says that is secondary and subordinate. Instead of saying to the use of the dwelling, say secondary and subordinate to an occupied residential dwelling.
To, okay.
In which does not change the residential character of the dwelling. So that conveys that the red, the, the principal use is a residence that must be occupied.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that looks good. I like that.
I mean, I don't know if that quote gets what you were after or not, but it, it might get it closer.
So I think we don't need that part then.
Right. Okay, so this is a, um, this is the definition that's being offered. Um. Which I'm going to take as Bill is moving this as a definition.
Yes. Yeah.
Would someone like to um second that? I'll second it. Barbara is seconding it. Anyone want to discuss this further?
You should can read it.
Uh, well, I could read it out, is it hard for you guys to see?
The true ones before we vote on it.
Yeah, let me read it. Um, residential secondary business use. A non, a non-farm related business activity resulting in a product or service for financial gain. Conducted wholly or partly within a dwelling unit or accessory structure. As a non-residential use that is secondary and subordinate to an occupied residential dwelling. And which does not change the residential character of the dwelling unit or vicinity. In distinction to a minor home occupation, the enterprise is conducted. By a business owner operator who does not reside on the premises or on an adjacent property. A residential secondary business use may employ up to three full-time equivalent employees in addition to the owner operator. Exterior evidence of this secondary use, if present at all, is limited to a small sign or lawn plaque. Few customers, clients, or other business associates enter the premises daily. The business does not store business products. Equipment or vehicles outside. The enterprise normally produces only household quantities and types of waste. And does not involve delivery, truck visits, or other traffic beyond that expected of a typical residence. Business associated with agritourism. Farm brewery, cider winery, farm operations, and farm stands are not considered residential secondary business uses.
Thank you.
How's that? I thought I had one too.
Why is a part of it, Bill, why have you highlighted some in yellow?
Oh, I, I was trying, so the secondary is, because we're starting to discuss, it, it, the, I didn't go away, but I was high on secondary, because that's, that's a key point. As we're in our discussion, I just wanted to make sure people noted that. Uh, and then the other part was I started to highlight, you know, it's the fact that, that, you know, there's not much exterior evidence. I mean, that's a key feature of both a minor home occupation. But for me, then also, uh, this kind of business allowed business use is that you really should barely notice there at all. Very little exterior evidence of the business being there. So that's why I, and I will take that highlighting away now.
Okay.
Bruce. The second one, the last one that you got highlighted, the enterprise normally produces own household quantities. And types of waste. And does not involve delivery, truck, and delivery. I don't know shit about the normal.
I couldn't fully hear what Bruce said. I, I got most of it, but.
Bruce was uh wondering what normally meant in the sentence that is highlighted now.
Okay. Right.
I would take it to be that's on average, but there might be a big delivery at one point or several times during the year, but not. Consistently.
I mean, that, that's copied along from the home, um, minor home occupation, and so I, I agree with what Jean's interpretation, but you know, Nan. Who probably wrote the other definition can chime in if.
Well, yeah, I, I think normally is, you know, most households have. You know, garbage pickup once a week, they have deliveries come a couple times a week, you know, not big tractor trailers coming and going every day. Um, you know. The, I think that's. I mean, this is a pretty common language. I, I agree that normally. Some households may produce more of those than others, but. It's, you know, they're not commercial operations that have semi. Tractor trailers coming in and unloading things.
So, so we're expecting this business to look kind of like that, normal residential amount of use, but it's understood that, okay, maybe there's a day. Where because it is a business, they do have a big truck come in, but you know, every once in a while, a homeowner does too. You got a bunch of papers delivered, right? So occasionally. You know, a bigger thing is okay, I guess.
Ernie?
I was just gonna say that maybe take normally out and just say the enterprise shall, um. You know, produce only. Household quantities of waste and blah, 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 blah. Yeah, I just normally just, there's a weird word to be put there, I guess. When I look here.
I'm act-, I'm actually fine with normally, but whatever.
Yeah. No.
Um, well.
Pretty vague, guys.
Okay, so Ernie is suggesting that we uh, that we amend that to be shall.
Shall produce.
Shall produce. Uh, Bill, would you accept that as a amendment?
I, I mean, I'm okay either way, I just would like, you know, I thought zoning commission can just. Talk about whether they like that or not.
Um, I, 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 I would like to suggest that we're not. Mandating that an enterprise produce waste. Uh, so, so I'd rather just drop normally and, um, and say the enterprise produces only household quantities and types of waste.
Okay, we've gotten rid of, uh, would you accept that, Bill?
Uh, you know, I'm fine.
Yes, yes, say yes.
Alright, say yes. Alright, and then we can debate whether we should put it back in.
Okay. So.
Do we change that in all the other places where that?
Yeah, that would, well, the only place, I, I think it mostly applies in, again, minor home business, uh, big change up there too.
Uh, so with that. I have any other discussion? I have that motion on the floor, getting rid of normally and getting rid of the whole thing. Keeping, keeping the thing without normally.
Alright, so what's on the table right now?
I want to ask you if anyone else has anything to suggest. Michelle, did you have something?
Uh, no, I, I, first of all, I was fine with normally, uh, but I think uh. The enterprise produces is the next best al-, better alternative. I think shall produce, like, does kind of imply that it's, you know, you're saying it's got to produce. Certain amount, whatever. So I think the way you have it now is acceptable. I was fine with normally, but.
Okay, with that. Uh, all those in favor of accepting this definition? And including this in the, in the draft, say aye. Aye, aye?
Aye.
That is approved. Bill, would you send me that?
Oh, yeah, I'll send it to you and Nan. I'm just gonna save it right now. Um.
And I, as a follow-up to that, I suggest that we also then go to the. On page twenty, the definition of home occupation minor and take out the word normally. So that we are consistent.
Yeah, that, that's a note to Nan, I guess.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, that's what we're doing. We're getting rid of the word normally on that.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Woo, okay. We are now going on to reformulation of how we approach density in the ag rural district. Um. Which is. How Bill praised this and what Nan brought up before too, but I'm gonna let Bill finish what he's doing so he doesn't confuse himself.
Yeah, okay, I think, I think I've done that part. Um, I just, as I, I could, maybe, maybe. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So. It's unfortunate, there was just so much candy in between the last meeting and now, that, that brain cells have gotten fried, but. Um, Ernie had proposed, um, you know. The question, you know, the real question comes down, I, I tried to lay this out in the one email is, you know. What is it that we're trying to protect in terms of like rural character and everything with the density limitation? And is it really that different if there's, say, a large house versus a duplex, for example, on a parcel? Because putting it cast in these terms of residential density would require a duplex to, you know, essentially take up. You know, again, it doesn't have to, but you know, on average, it would take up twice as much room as a single-family residence. And then you put these. Townhouses in the mix, it got me totally confused, because now you got three dwellings in there. And, you know, so. Ernie suggested, let's go with more like a lot size, lot density formulation. So, you know, and, and again, then when you start adding in commercial, what, what if one of the lots is used for commercial purposes, you know? And all that, so. Um, we thought, I started thinking in terms of lots. Uh, and you know, there's, I'm reminding myself, if, if, if you guys want me to stop talking, I will, because I'm sort of working this through to remind myself where we're at. But the way I finally just cast it and threw it out there was, okay. It's kind of okay, but I'm a little worried about multifamily housing, so let's make a proposal. In which it, and I think Ernie's suggestion was a development unit, which I liked, because I actually. You know, I was starting to lean in the same direction. That basically parcels. Get a certain amount of, of ability to develop, which we would call a development unit, and a development unit can be a single-family home. A duplex, a townhouse, or a commercial building. Um, or it could be an apartment, a multifamily structure up to a certain size, and now we'll have to check the notes whether. That should be four or six, you know, or, or what. Um, so I think that's roughly where the proposal stands. To help clarify this, Ernie suggests you creating a table to help make it clear to people, and I think that's a good idea. And that's my recollection of things, and I do have my written notes that I could pull up. To make sure I didn't screw up.
Okay, and see Michelle's hand up. Michelle?
Uh, so I guess my question is, Bill, why do you keep bringing up the option of six units for a residential building? If, if the New York State definition of residential is three. Or less. So why are you six?
Okay, so we, um. So the question is, because we can do what we want, so. Um, we have a thing in the zoning law that says a multifamily residential structure can have up to eight units in it. So that means that once you go above eight units, you have to have more than one building. And our zoning law, um, basically, if we were to do it in terms of parcels, that mean you could, every parcel could have an eight-unit structure on it. To be, and, and still fit within the confines of our zoning. Um, the. Three or more, which is the New York State definition of multifamily housing, is not what I'm suggesting tweaking or changing. I'm saying. Um. Do we treat? A three or four or five or what unit? Multifamily housing structure any differently than a house? At what number of units should we consider that something? That we want to treat differently in terms of density? Than a house? It could be three. Um, Ernie was suggesting a higher number, and so I think I chose six as, you know, uh, something in there. And again, I, you know, philosophically, the question is, think about the landscape, think about buildings out there on the landscape. Um, I don't want, you know, the whole rural Caroline covered with buildings. I, I think not many people in the town of Caroline do. Um, but, but what is the right, you know, so we set this three-acre density on average, and therefore you could have a bunch of one-acre parcels, and what then do we feel comfortable having on that one-acre parcel? What starts to drive too much traffic? So that changes the, the neighbor, you know, could we have? A bunch of eight-unit apartment buildings on one-acre parcels, and then we say that's fine? Well, that might be, then that is fine. But I was saying, well, maybe eight for me is a little discomforting in terms of treating the impact on the. Character and neighborhood as the same as a single-family residence, and I was more comfortable with a smaller number of units in an apartment building. So that this, this dwelling development unit allotment would be something smaller than the eight that you're allowed by. Our definition of, of how many you can have in a building. Our definition of of how many you can have in a building, but larger than just two or three. So that's my rambling thoughts on that.
But I just want to add, if you look at page seventy seven. You had made a decision quite some time ago that the density for multifamily units. Was a lot higher than single, so you double it, you double it, so you would get double the amount unless you. Provided below market affordable housing. So are you talking about? The overall density of the parcel, or are you talking about the intensity of use per building?
Right, so so in some sense, that's where I got to six. So if we went this direction, those bump up factors, the two X and three X would would go away.
I think we're we're getting, we're we're dealing with details. And I think that we need to kind of go back to the overriding idea behind this change. And then and then talk about the details, because I think we're we're missing a lot.
Well, Ernie, since you had helped bring this up.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of bring us back to to just so everybody can fully understand where this comes from was that. Um, uh, we had originally been looking at that density as. You know, this average density that, you know, you have a lot, you divide, you know, the acres divided by three, that gives you how many. Uh, units you could put on this lot, and I we thought it all were, seems that many of us had been assuming that this was. Okay, a lot is a lot, but in fact, when we start to look at this more carefully, it was defined as a residential unit. And that became rather difficult to administer. You know, when you're looking at the uh, the way this was going to be uh, recorded with, you know, every lot. And the cap in the town was going to be assessed for, you know, how many parcels. It could be divided up into. And based on how many acres there were divided by three. And then there was going to be a record kept as subdivisions occurred and all this happened, and it all became very complicated once we started to have. A commercial property in the next, or somebody converted a barn to an apartment or whatever. And so, um. And then, and then it seemed that on top of all of that, that this was was kind of, uh, uh, you know. Encouraging uh, single family housing to the detriment of of multiple family housing. Perhaps, and so we had this this clause that Dan was referring to, where we were allowing greater density. Um, for multiple family, um, based on this multiplier that we had that, you know, was increased. If it was uh, below market and this and that, and it was all, you know, kind of a bish mash stuff and and so. Um, you know, we we started to talk about getting rid of the term residential unit. And just turning it into a lot, and then that just kind of made a bunch of other stuff not. Very well, it didn't work well within the documents we had now. And so, you know, Bill and I kind of simultaneously came up with this idea, let's quit calling it a residential unit. Let's just call it a development unit. The development unit is basically a single family home. Or a commercial building. And we would give. All of these different types of residential pieces, a. We would give them in a table, a a set of 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 quantities for how many development units they would each um, uh, require. And so a two family home was only one development unit. A. I don't know what it was, four family, four, four unit, uh, whole, whole family, okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I've got that note here, so I can pop that up and read it if that'd be helpful.
Background of this is trying to 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 get away from looking at. Properties and how many residential units they can have, but just how much development density of all types they can have. Because that better reflects what happens in Caroline, which is. Parcelling off a little chunk at a time and not, you know, wholesale, you know, two hundred acre developments. Kind of marching across the landscape. Um, and so, and I think that it just makes the the tracking process quite easy. So, um, with that background, now I think we can talk about. How many development units are appropriate for each of the different types of commercial residential? Multi-family, whatever, um, and uh, you go from there, so.
Okay, before we go on to this table, let me ask people who haven't been as intimately connected to this conversation. Uh, do you have any thoughts about this so far?
I guess that's the question. Are we agreement that that this is?
I do.
More way to go to proceed.
Okay, Michelle?
I I agree, I think development unit is a better term. So I'll just put that out there. I agree with that.
Okay. And Bart does, and Bruce? Okay, okay, with that, let's move forward into the yellow highlighted area.
All right, so again, I don't know how well you guys can see it in here. This is basically, um, what Ernie had proposed, and we just sort of, you know. Stated, but a single family house definitely is one development unit. That's our basic unit, but because of for affordability reasons, et cetera. We are treating a a two family residence and a townhouse also as one development unit. Um, those are proposals, I think, you know, worth discussing whether whether that's appropriate. Um, a multifamily development would get one development unit. It would cost us, you want to go in for the first four units. And then another one for each additional two units. And again, that's in recognition that, you know, you convert a house to a bunch of apartments. That's a house is a development unit and a house broken up into three or four apartments. That should probably be a unit too. But in keeping with the sort of like double density that we said, once you go above that, it does cost you another development unit for each two living units that you create. Um, and then if it's an affordable one in recognition of that triple density, then it's a development unit for six dwelling units. And then an additional one for every three additional units. So this is a site to, you know, like a duplex is kind of almost the base unit. And then Ernie had asked for commercials at one development unit per building, but we do indeed allow. You know, the footprint per building, we have a limit, and then the footprint, total footprint of all the buildings. So I proposed in an email that the commercial basically be, you know, a commercial lot as a development unit, so there. You could put whatever is allowed in that district on a lot is what could be put on for commercial. So there are the limits on commercial sizes, um, but that's again, something to be discussed, whether it should be, you know, how to phrase the the commercial limit. On this, and and I think essentially Nan had written it as, you know, one commercial use per lot. Um, sort of thing in the in the Ag World, uh, that would have been her her modification earlier. So that's the proposed table, or, you know, there could be examples out, but that's the basic idea.
Okay, let me ask Nan, um, as you look at this. Um, what are your thoughts?
I think it's complicated. I I think that people will have trouble understanding it. Um, I don't think it's a. Yeah, I just find, I personally find it very complex. I've read this over multiple times and still have trouble trying to understand how it would work. Um, I didn't have no problem with setting, you know, rephrasing it from one dwelling. Per three acres to one development unit per acre. Um, and I I get that, um, you, you don't want to penalize. You know, you don't want to have someone who wants to put a townhouse or a multifamily unit in. Have, you know, an inordinate amount of space that they need, but that is what you're. You know, and I think that is a fundamental change to what you're trying to do. You are trying to limit development density. And so if you have eight people living on a parcel in a multifamily dwelling versus one family. That's a, there are other implications other than just the space that building takes up on the lot. Um, so, I, yeah, if you want to do it, fine, I I, you know, I think that you. I, you know, there might be other, I I'm not, I guess I'm I'm, I was confused, to be honest, I was confused. I'm a little confused as to why this is a big issue. I understand that a dwelling unit per acre doesn't address how many. Commercial developments you can have on a property. Um, but we we do require one acre for a commercial lot and limit the building size. So I guess it, you know, if someone wants to have a mix of of residential types and a commercial. They would have to have one acre as a minimum lot size for every commercial use they want. What we don't have, um. You know, we, and we have the maximum total footprint of commercial structures, so even if someone had a hundred acres. They couldn't, they couldn't have, you know, gazillion. Commercial spaces because you're limiting it in the Ag World District to a maximum total building footprint of six thousand.
Right.
So the most that you could get.
On a lot.
Is six thousand square feet per lot.
But what I think if you combine that with, if somebody could could take, somebody could take a hundred acre lot. And divide it into other lots, right? And then could still, you'd still be limited, I mean, even if you divided that into.
Man, it sounds like you could do a hundred commercial developments on a hundred acre lot.
Say that again, Ernie, I couldn't hear you.
The, I mean, it's just that, I mean, the confusion that I had is is that, um, you know, by that, like, following your logic. You had a hundred acre, uh, parcel, and you've had, uh, and and a commercial development where you acquired a minimum of one acre. Seems to me that you could put a hundred commercial properties on that hundred acres.
But not if you set the density, if you have a development unit, I mean, like if you go back to the edits.
That's what Ernie is saying, that we need to bring commercial in.
Yeah, no, I I I I get that. I have no, I I'm not concerned about calling your density one development. Unit. I have no problem with that, in that we would have to put a definition in, but I I'm confused about your table. That's what I'm confused about.
Table is is this, is that, um, the multifamily is basically doing exactly what that other, uh, doubling. Thing was, I forget what part of.
Page seventy seven, yeah.
Yeah, and 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 that, uh, you know, and it also is accounting for the affordable by doing the one point five. Or, you know, whatever I suggested there. So, so you get rid of of those parts. So that when you are trying to, you know, look at a map and see how many development units that a lot has. And then you can go to the table and say, okay, on this lot, I have seven development units, and I can flip them. I can split them up in the way, instead of fishing through the full document to find out. Oh, okay, well, if I do multifamily, then it's over here, and then if I do commercial, I gotta do this, you know. And that that was the point, was the point was to make it simpler, not less, not more complex.
I I'm gonna break this up into two things. I think I hear general agreements about the use of the word of the word develop, um. Development unit. Uh, because that does make sense, and that deals with the commercial issue. So I am saying that, um. Bill and Ernie are moving that we change that from dwelling units to development unit. Do I hear a chord for that?
Sure.
Great.
Yeah.
Uh, good. Anyone want to speak to that? Hearing none? All in favor of that, that we, throughout this, we turn, we change dwelling unit. Or a lot, which I think is what we changed it to last time, to development unit. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
I gotta see where it comes out of there.
Now, that's, that's the first part. Then the second part is, there is this concept of. Um, how many development units different things are. So what I'm gonna do is just go through the table, and I, what I want you to do is if you're happy with with what it is, just nod at me or raise your hand. So single family is one, is one development unit. Everyone, put your thumbs up. Let me see. Great. Two family is one development unit. Yes? Townhouses, which are three, is that one dwelling unit? Or should we leave townhouses in the multifamily category where they would still be assessed as one dwelling unit? I think it makes sense to put it on the table myself. So everyone happy with that?
I mean, the townhouse is the one that does trouble me, so I think I need to hear from Ernie, so, and maybe Nan. So so you have a townhouse, which is a three. You know, it's it's three structures, they they share a wall, there's a firewall, whatever it is, and in some places the property line goes through that wall, whatever. But they are three families typically.
Right.
Right?
But the reason they exist is because people want to own their property. And so they're, you know, typically very, very small, you know, thirty five, forty foot wide lots. For the front yard and the backyard and no side yard. I mean, basically, you know, it's these these slots here. And that doesn't really fit so well into our. Our, our, you know, portioning, you know, how many lots you can have in a piece of land. Um, so if somebody actually is gonna build one of these things, they really be, it would just be a three unit. Um, multifamily, multifamily, multifamily property that's built according to the rule. That governs townhouses in building code. Um, which is, which are different than multifamily houses. They're the same townhouses, treated just as they the one and two family houses in the building code. So for the purpose of, uh, our discussion here, I think if you just say. You know, anything that's that's more than than, you know, less than four dwelling units is. One.
Do you?
One do you?
Okay, so.
It's okay, so the discussion I want to have is then, you know, but we are talking now about potentially three different families, three different cars. And I admit, there would be houses that might have several adult children in them with three or four different cars coming, but do we really feel that's? You know, it's fine to treat a townhouse as one development unit. That's, I am, I'm okay with going that way. I'm just slightly troubled by it. I just want to know what other people in zoning commission think.
I think we were going before to four development, I mean, four dwelling units counting this as as one. As one residential unit, or one, yeah, 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 a four unit multifamily house.
When you.
Was for just the duplex times two with the 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 multiplier that you were allowing. It's one dwelling, so, um, the four, okay, Reese is good, okay?
Okay.
Michelle?
Well, that's where I'm a little bit confused, um, because, you know, we just talked about moving things of something more than three. To from residential to commercial. But now it sounds like you're saying four is the number for residential. And I thought New York State said that, you know, uh, up to three was residential and four was commercial. So that's where I'm confused, and if you can explain to me why I shouldn't be confused, or what am I misunderstanding here?
Well, I think the reason we wanted to move multifamily to commercial was because there were a couple of instances in. The regulation where we were using the word. Commercial differently than multifamily, and Dan kept reminding us, no, multifamily is commercial. So I said, well, why don't we move it in the tables to the commercial category? That was, that was all.
But but it was more than three, I thought.
Uh, right, and and so to some extent, it's, I don't want to say it's apples and oranges exactly, but this is different. This this is a, an accounting of how we're trying to obtain housing equity in Caroline, that there's plenty of affordable housing available. In Caroline, that there's plenty of affordable housing available. Has nothing to do with whether it's commercial or not commercial, how many units, it's a question of. How many apartments can you? Put in, in one building, and essentially consider it. Like a single family home for the purposes of. You know. Uh, you know, being, uh, like I said, providing affordable housing in Caroline. That number of here could be three, four, five, six, or seven, it's unrelated, in my mind at least, to the New York State. Three and above is a commercial multifamily development. This is an accounting trick. It's like how they slant, it's like a graduated income tax bracket that you're doing. Uh, because you're trying to push policy in a certain direction.
Right.
Bruce.
Well, I guess. My field.
Uh, I'm sorry, you were talking on top of each other, so Michelle, finish your thought, and then I'll answer Bruce.
This is, you know, I acknowledge this is not my field, I know nothing about it, but it's weird to me that they're not the same, but, uh. Anyway.
I, I think it doesn't have to be the same in this instance, and. Bruce wanted to know what affordable housing means. Affordable housing is def- is defined as not costing more than thirty percent of your income. That's how, that's the definition.
We have a definition for that.
And we, uh, we, we do, right, having, and, and it's, all, the definition in the, in the, um. Zoning, the zoning document has something about below market rates and other stuff, I can't remember the exact.
It says dwelling units inhabited by households whose annual income is within eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the Tompkins County median income. With adjustments for household sizes defined and periodically updated by the US Department of, you know, HUD. And the annual rental cost does not exceed thirty percent of said income, or for homeowners. The annual cost of the sum of the principal interest taxes and insurance. Income charges as applicable does not exceed thirty percent of said income. So it's thirty percent of income in that, in that. Household in, with, for people who are earning within eighty to a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent. Of the Tompkins County median income, and these are all set by, these come out of. No.
No.
Generally, what happens is, uh. This happens for all sorts of multifamily dwellings in Tompkins County annually. They, they're set and they're published by HUD and. It's like, if these people, these are properties you can have. And then it qualifies. Okay. Um, so, I think we answered Michelle's question, I think we answered. Bruce's question. So, what I'm thinking, what I saw with townhouses, are people refine in general, with leaving that in there as one dwelling unit. Multifamily development, let's go up to one dwelling unit for up to four dwelling units. And one dwelling unit for each two.
Development.
Excuse me, about, yeah, for up to four development units, no. Well, the family development would be one developing unit for up to four dwelling units, it would be so good if this was not the same initial. And then one development unit for each two additional units, so. Six would be, uh, three and. Uh, eight would be. Four. Right, okay, so, um. I think then, for me, this is where we get into the issues that Nan brought up about what does this mean, so what this means is. You could take a, um, theoretically, a one acre lot. Think you'd have a hard time actually putting an eight family unit on it because of setting, but let's say a two acre lot. And put this on, and what you would have is. Perhaps eight, perhaps sixteen pars. And several dumpsters, and et cetera, et cetera. So. Are people happy with that as, as doing it, and does this? Change anything else that we have done so far?
Well, what you have to remember is that. In order to. Get that two acre parcel, whatever, you have to have another parcel somewhere else, it's larger.
Right.
Um, in order so that everything equals.
Right.
Um, and so, um, you know, in, in my mind, we're, we're not. If we're, if we're, if our intent is to limit. Multifamily developments. To a certain lot size, that should be something that happens in one of the tables, right?
Right.
Not, and, I mean, this is all about. Apportioning development units to a, a big chunker, I mean, this is just kind of like. How do we, how do we deal with the, you know, three acre average? In terms of looking at a bigger parcel. Um, so. Well, I think, I think that some of my, uh, sides were looking at, uh, trailer parks. As a, as an example.
Right.
And, and kind of thinking about, well, how many? You know, how many, right, you know, how many mobile home units?
Right.
Can you fit on a property reasonably with? Stuff and, and kind of did some of the math, and kind of seemed like this worked. Um, I don't have that email in front of me, but, um. Uh, but I think that those are, those are two different questions, you know, that, you know, limiting. The size of multiple family in the agricultural district is done with the table. Um. I mean, assess how many lots can be, you know, created. For what purpose on a specific parcel, and what this is about. So, a very different.
Okay, well, with that, with that explanation, how do people feel about, about this? Multifamily development, one development unit for four dwelling units. One development unit for each additional two units, which would mean. One, two, or three, as you went up to eight units.
So that's essentially the same thing as what we're, we've got on the books now.
Exactly.
That's, that's. That's quite, right?
Right. Are people?
So would you keep the multifamily at eight, you, eight, capinated eight units per structure, or how does that fit in?
Yes.
I would tend to, yes, cuz that, that's what would. Well, yeah, I don't know, I, I think that doesn't change this much, right, could we still?
Would that make it impossible to do? Fountain manner? Again?
Uh, yeah. In, in an ag district anyway, um.
It's not in an ag district, it's in a hamlet, but.
No, I don't remember, do we, do, yeah, we don't, we don't allow.
I, I think that's fine for me to have that in the hamlet. I wouldn't wanna put it out in the countryside because I think you have those, all those issues about. You know, buses, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 that's a different use than, than multifamily.
Is it senior housing, what does it come under?
No, that's, that would be multifamily.
Oh, something else, I thought we had that as, uh, retirement home, like something.
I don't think we have anything about retirement homes.
Uh, well, then we have one of them, right?
Yeah, I don't see anything else that. I mean, those, those kinds of developments are. Typically multifam, you know, considered multifamily developments that happen to be. You know, some of them are used for senior citizens, not all of them. I mean, that, that building could just as easily be. You know, could have been built for any age.
Yeah. Um. So where do we limit? Multifamily to eight, is that in a multifamily?
But, so, so somewhere in there, we say that the maximum number of units in a building is eight, I don't remember which. Um, and, and so that does raise an interesting. Question, so you know, if we hadn't done this, we just left it at, you get double the base density in the Ag Rural area. That means, you know, it, it was a dwelling, you know, a residential unit for three acres. But you could now get two residential u- units for three acres, and if you did your. Eight. Um, you would therefore need. You know, two, 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 four, four, you need twelve acres, right?
Right.
You could do. Eight here with our formula now at the cost of three development units. Which means you essentially, you know, on average, nine acres, and again, it doesn't really work out that way, so in some sense. This formulation allows a somewhat denser, if you're doing a big parcel. I'm gonna do a whole bunch of multifamily development in this fifty acre parcel. Um, this formula will allow a few more units. Um, cuz in that fifty acres, I, you know, put a bunch of eight unit apartment buildings. And I get, I only use up one development unit for the first four. Uh, you know, on, on each of those, and it used, it used to cost me essentially four, but now it only gonna cost me three. So. You know.
What about if you, what about if you have a different development, number of development units? Cuz right now you have a special use permit across the board everywhere in town. Allowing for multifamily dwelling. So, it, you know, you could have a different one for different districts, so the Ag Rural District might be one. One density and hamlets might be another density.
Yeah, well. True that, what we've done in the hamlets, though, is we are now letting the, essentially the health department set the density. Right, we got rid of minimum lot size in all the hamlets, and it says, whatever you can get approval for septic and water for, you can make a lot that small. So the density formation, you know, it doesn't. You can't really do it anymore in the. Hey, I, I'm okay with. This multifamily picture, I. I just don't see a lot happening, and if it starts to be a real problem and people are figuring out loopholes to take advantage of, then maybe this has to be looked at again. Um, in the future.
Well, that's, yeah, that's true of everything. We're asking that, that happened every, at least every two years, so. So.
However, I do have one question for Nan. Uh, uh, apartments, like when you, when, now we have, we call it what the, um. I keep spacing on the word, but you, you know, the, the, the granny flat, right, sort of thing.
Accessory dwelling.
Ah, accessory dwelling, yeah, thank you. Um, so, when you have a townhouse, does each? Piece of the townhouse, the three, each get an accessory dwelling unit or not?
No, you, and I'd have to go back and look and see how we do it, but it's typically multi-townhouses and multifamily. Dwelling typically don't get accessory dwelling units. They're only for, they're usually only for single family, some communities. Allow them for two family, but I would say. The more common way of doing it is that accessory dwelling, dwelling units, and we'd have to look it up, are only allowed. Associated with single family units.
Okay, cuz that was, I guess, that's the same question about a two family, so I would propose that we make that limitation. And I don't know how the zoning commission feels, but I think it gets just way too. Complicated, otherwise.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
It's, it, it's in the definition that it's a single family principal dwelling. Um.
Okay. Good. Then, then I'm happy with this.
Okay, so.
Oh, though I, I have one question, one final question. We've talked about moving, yeah, I know, I have lots of final questions. Um, there's been this issue of moving multifamily into the commer- commercial, is what. Ernie and Michelle have talked about, a question for Nan, I mean, I'm not sure what they, what that really means, I mean. Commercial uses have a maximum building footprint set by the district. If multifamily housing is put under commercial, does that mean that that? Uh, building footprint limit applies to multifamily housing?
That's also my question.
Well, we managed to offset it with commercial, no matter where we put it in the data.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the. I think that, you know, the multifamily, i- it's odd because it is a commercial use, but. I, I would say that I, I think the intent has never been to put that limitation on. Multifamily structures.
That was my understanding.
Assuming that that's your intent, then I think that we ought to, if we, uh. I don't have a problem with it being in the residential section, but if you move it to the commercial section of the use table. We just add a note that. The maximum square, or the maximum building footprint for commercial structures does not. Um, is not associated with the multifamily dwelling.
Okay, that, that I'm comfortable with wherever it goes, that's fine.
So, so, so I'm, I'm just wondering if it would be confusing to put it in the commercial section, um. You know, right now, section six point five point one four, called multifamily developments. Specifies that all multifamily developments shall require a site plan review and a special use permit. Pursuant to Article seven and eight, so I'm not sure that we gain anything by putting it under commercial. And we may confuse people because they don't view multifamily residential housing as being commercial, they view it as. A residential use, and so if you look in the use table, that's where you would look for it. So, so I, I, I guess I'm wondering if somebody would explain the benefit of putting it into the commercial list. Part of the list.
I, I think the intent, if I read the emails right, the intent was to make sure that everybody knew that. A multifamily. Building is a commercial, it follows the New York State Building Code. We could just put that word commercial into the definition, if that's all you wanted to clarify.
No, I just, I just found it kind of. A little bit disturbing that. Um, you know, you would, you would start to kind of say, well. Um, oh, no, you can't do that cuz multifamily is commercial. That's just like, okay, well, then let's make it clear to this. Uh, or change those things that triggered whatever it was that. Positively commercial, I guess with the, the, the design standards, you know. You know, the, the, design standards don't apply residential, except. Of course, it applies to multifamily because that's commercial. Um, you know, that's, 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 I think, where the trip up was for me, um. So if we can somehow.
Would that, I.
Iron this out, I think, you know, if, if. I don't have any trouble with where it goes, let's just make it kind of clear what, what rules.
Um, therefore, I suggest, as I think Barb just did, that we add into multifamily dwelling. Um, which says, a building or group of buildings in mobile homes on one lot containing three or more dwelling units. Also includes all type of congregant housing and boarding houses, whether or not intended for medical. Or mental health purposes, substance abuse treatment, or other social welfare or public health reasons. I would add a sentence that says. Multifamily dwellings are commercial use.
Where were you just reading, Jean?
That's the definition. I, I would put it there.
Page twenty-three, I mean, multifamily dwell. And Bill is saying you wouldn't put it there, where would you put it?
Well, I'm not, well, cuz it, cuz that's. I, well, maybe, I guess, I, let me back off from, from I wouldn't to I might. I, I just, it just seemed to be clear, and honestly, I don't know how many people would look at the definition. Tell me to realize that, I, I just.
Well, I realize that, but it is the place we tell people to.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true, that's a good point, that's how I came along to maybe.
That's, that's.
You know, there's two, there's actually two definitions of multifamily. If you go, there's one that's dwelling comma multifamily, that simply says a residential building designed for or occupied by. Three or more families with the number of families. In resident not exceeding the number of dwelling units provided, and then there's another one. Under mu- that you just read, under multifamily dwelling, that is a little different. So that is one place we need to clear, we need to have one or the other.
Yes.
Where was the first one you read, Nan?
Under dwelling comma multifamily.
Um.
I mean, the, the typical one is more the mul- the, you know, it's simply. A structure that has three or more units in it. Um. That, you know, I'm not quite, I don't recall how we got to, but that.
Well, the second one, the first one that I read is different because it talks about mobile homes on one lot.
Yeah, and then, you know, it. I think that is really. More. I don't know if those are multifamily dwellings or multifamily developments that. You know, like if you have, like, your, um. Your boysville cottages.
Yes.
Um. That's a multifamily development, it's got multiple buildings that have multiple numbers of units in each building. Um.
Do we have that phrase anywhere in our thing? In our document?
Uh, yes, I just saw that, that was, um. In the use table, it says. Multi-on the, yeah, on the page thirty-nine, it's multifamily dwelling, including multi-building residential development.
Okay, well then I suggest we need to just change.
And, and also section six point five point fourteen is titled multifamily developments.
Okay, so we need that. It's just a heads-up wrong order. It says it should be multifamily development instead of multifamily dwelling. And then I think we use the definition of multi-fa- of dwelling comma, multi-family. And we add the, that this, that multifamily dwellings are a commercial use. So that it's clear. Uh, is that okay with everyone?
Uh, yeah, though I ask. Um, then maybe again, if you're doing a multifamily development, you ought to know this. But do we need to sort of, you know, beat the nail over the head and say they're a commercial use and therefore. You know, things like commercial design standards apply. Do we, do we need to be that explicit or is what you read just?
Well, the most likely, if you go to the section that Barb just mentioned, six point, um.
Five.
Five point fourteen. It has its own set of development standards for multifamily.
Okay, and do other commercial design standards apply or just those?
Uh, well, I, I guess you can decide what you want.
Um, I, I think, um, section six point five point fourteen. Covers it because it's, that section six point five point fourteen. Talks about parking, talks about sidewalks, talks about, um. Architectural style, talks about landscape lighting, building elevation.
Signage?
Signage, uh. I'm looking to see if there's signage. Parking signs, uh, appropriate parking signs. Um, yes, one sign for entrance that identifies. And is permitted and should be compatible with the general environment of the project site. Signs shall conform to article six. Section six point two point eight.
Someone did a really good job writing this. I, I'm not sure who that would be, but. Well done.
Okay, so.
So do you want, so go back to, so I've changed the multifamily dwelling, the second one, to be the multifamily development.
Yes.
But going back to the dwelling comma, multi-family, you want to add in the, the, the notion that it's a commercial. Development, how, what was the wording that you had, Jean? I didn't quite get that.
The wording that I had was, I'm dropping it on the floor. Multifamily dwellings are commercial use. That's all I said, but Bernie, you think it needs a statement?
You know, are considered a commercial use for, for purposes of. Design standards, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I think if we, you can't put in et cetera, et cetera. Well, I think that's why it just. Then the code officer explains what that is. That's my theory. Cause you know. It's a commercial use, so.
I mean, do you want to say multifamily dwellings are considered commercial uses pursuant to the New York State Building Code?
That sounds fine, or a commercial use.
Well, we're concerned that they, they adhere to the commercial design standard, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're trying to trigger here.
But I thought Barb just said that you thought that six point five point fourteen had all of the commercial. Or all of the multifamily dwelling design standards that you would need.
Correct. It has, uh, it has, uh. A variety of things about max, a maximum building site density, but then, uh, item six on their multifamily developments, other design and layout standards. Is A through P. So there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we don't have to have them. We don't have to call it commercial use. Or there are other reasons that we need to make it clear. That's, that's my question.
I think for the purposes of, of zoning standards and requirements. It doesn't need to specify that it's commercial, but if we want the zoning law language. To serve as a reminder to the code officer and to a prospective developer that they have to. Abide by New York State commercial, uh, requirements, then we included that reminder language in there.
I think that's what's been discussed, right?
Michelle?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just have to ask this though, um, cause I know nothing. When we say commercial lot, you know, is one development unit, then that does not include multifamily though, right?
That was not my intent.
On one hand, we're saying multifamily is commercial use, but then we say commercial lot is one, we're saying it's not. That's where me as somebody who knows nothing is confused.
Okay, so we have, I'm going to finish up the definition part and then we're gonna go back to the table. So I, here for the definitions is dwelling multifamily, we add a line when it says multifamily dwellings are a commercial use. Uh, multifamily development, we've added, we've made sure that that says that clearly as well. And. Mark?
I, I, I'm a student, still not sure why the first part of what you said. Why we would put in the definition of multifamily dwelling that it's a commercial use. That's the part I'm not getting here. Why we need to do that.
And, and I will go with Barb and given that we, there's. All the stuff, well, believe, we believe all the stuff is specified for multifamily development units in terms of standards. I think we no longer need to appeal to the commercial design standards, and so we don't need to.
Okay, I'm happy to get rid of this. I was trying to, uh, calm people's concern that no one would know. Okay, so we'll get rid of that, but we will put it in the other one. Then we come back to here and where we were was the, was the multifamily development. One unit for four, two units for six, three units, four, eight. And are people happy with that? Show me your thumb if you are. Yes, yes, okay. Then we go on to multifamily development affordable. One development unit for up to six dwelling units, one development unit for each three additional units. I don't think, I guess that's, that's multifamily development. That would have to, well, it could be that you could build an eight family. One, you could do, do one building, have eight units in it and get two. If you actually went up beyond that, you'd be in multiple buildings. Right?
Right.
And we would be sort of thinking about an affordable boys' store, essentially, or something similar. Or.
Where would I go? I think I'm envisioning here is the. The famous developments from the fifties.
Yes.
That can be demolished.
Yes, I remember that. Yeah, or the one in Chicago. Yeah, okay. So, uh, I guess, um. If, are people happy with that? Yes. It's consistent with what we've talked about. Then let me get to the last one, which is commercial lot, one development unit. And I agree with, I agree with Michelle that that's confusing.
Well, if we don't, if we don't sit there and emphasize that multifamily development is commercial, is this now still confusing?
I think you have, I would say commercial lot, one development unit for non-residential. Would that make sense?
Commercial uses instead of lot?
Commer- uh, commercial uses.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's multi. I thought what Bill had put in there and then taken out was, was pretty good, but.
I mean, I had said something like a commercial, um, you know, other than multifamily or something, right?
That makes sense to me.
Well, but then the word lot didn't fit so nicely, but.
I think, you know, uh, so, so, you know. So I think this is the question of, you know.
Residential, just say residential.
Not, non-residential, um.
Commercial lot, non-residential, commercial lot, non-residential.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
In parentheses.
Okay, okay, with that, does everyone like that? Thumbs up?
Yeah, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
So you want me to add in all of that into a new table like after the other dimension stuff?
Yes, we do. Okay.
Think that that, that line in the table has to just, you know, footnote for reference this.
Right, right.
Okay, so Nan is gonna.
But it also means we, we, we strike the, the, the section of the language elsewhere that talks about the double density and triple density.
Good, so we're getting rid of some. We need to get rid of the page, it would be very exciting. Okay, so with that. We are, uh, with that, with adopting what we're just in yellow. With, uh, Nan moving things around in the document and getting rid of the parts that we don't need to have anymore. All in favor, say aye. Any extensions? Bruce is abstaining. Okay, so, uh, that is passed. With one extension. Okay. Okay, we're on to number three, concept and details for exemption from site plan review. This is what we had agreed to, but I think we're just discussing it again.
Well, we talked about this by email, but I don't think we agreed to this. I think we agreed that it was worth considering.
I think you're right. I think we agreed that we wanted to vote on it. So this was, this was the idea of allowing. Some commercial uses. Small commercial uses without having to go through, um, site plan.
Right.
And these were, um, and I think, I think there are thirteen of them.
Yeah, so I, I, and I will read them off, if there's people still in the audience, you know, but it's, it's not to be larger than fifteen hundred square feet. It shall have no more than six parking spaces. Um, at most one curb cut, not to exceed thirty feet. Um, and if it's on a New York State highway that the, um, have gotten the appropriate curb cut permit from the New York State Department of Transportation. Um, that a speedies permit for stormwater discharge, uh, is not required. Um, so if you need a speed's permit, therefore you would not be qualified for the exemption. Uh, that the use is not a type one action, um, that's part of, you know, that's seeker language. Um. Uh, that the use does not involve the handling, storage, placement, or transfer of hazardous substances or hazardous materials. Uh, this can be uncapitalized. Now that was capitalized in the source because of that was a special definition. Uh, the use does not involve waste disposal, waste storage, waste processing, or bulk transfer areas. The use is not a mixed use. If the use is multifamily residential, no more than four dwelling units are being created. Um, that the building is being put outside the water resources of flooding overlay district. That the building is being put on land where the elevation is less than a fifteen percent slope. And I can't remember if that's the right number. We should discuss that. And that the projected water use is less than a thousand gallons per day. And the intent would be that something that can satisfy all of these things. Um, is a, is a minor enough thing that we feel it can take place without, um, site plan review.
Uh, Ernie, you had a different number there, didn't you?
Uh, for the slope?
No, for the.
No, I think fifteen is right for the slope and I had, I had, I increased it, but then I had subsequently done more research and found that a thousand gallons a day. Um, with the, uh, four unit.
Okay, that's right, that's right. Okay, so that's good. So, uh, I think we've all had time to think about this. Does anyone have any?
The, the, the only thing about this is that we still need to look at the. Design standards because there's a number of them in there that I think are subject to enough. Discretionary value judgment. That would normally be part of the review process. Because everything had to go through the review process before. We're leaving it to the code enforcement officers. I think we need to. Look at that a little bit more carefully, but other than that, I'm all for this.
Um.
Could we add in a line that says, um, for all the phone criteria and that, that one of the criteria is that. It is not a formula business.
I think that needs discussion.
Okay, so Barb was off to that. Michelle?
Well, that's my question. I mean, you could have a formula business that happens to be fourteen hundred square feet. And then just all these other requirements. So how, how are you gonna be sure that it's gonna adhere to the design standards?
So I think, and this is where I'm following on with what Ernie said, is that. There's a role for the code enforcement officer. So just because it's not going through the review board, doesn't mean design standards can't, won't be followed. So I hardly think that we need to look at, or Nan, I'm sorry, Nan needs to look at articles five and six. And as Ernie suggested, you know, that there are some things in there that are negotiation. So that would be a review. Board function, but things like the size of the sign, how much fenestration there is, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all dried, cut and dried sort of things. The code enforcement officer would be tasked with following through. So just because something does not go through. Review does not mean that it is exempt from commercial design standards. And there is a person who should be tasked with making sure they, they adhere to them. So that.
But what do you do about the negotiation ones?
Well, yes, so those, this use we're assuming would be exempt from. I think that's a good point. And then that's what we have to be comfortable with, that. If there's something in there, I mean, the point though is that that's something, it's a back and forth. It's, it should be, you know. If someone can meet these things, my intent is that that means they're a pretty innocuous use. And so we don't really need some big negotiation with the view board. They probably wouldn't be having that negotiation. Because, you know, they just don't have much that raises people's hackles. Now, maybe I'm wrong. Uh, a formula business could be in a small thing. That's why I keep pushing that they have a traffic limit. One thing that, that, that often will distinguish, say a Starbucks, which could be quite small from some other businesses, they're gonna have a, a high volume of traffic. Now ideally, they have a lot of pedestrian traffic. Not gonna have that out in Caroline, but.
Maybe they'll have a drive-through traffic.
Right. So now we do have drive-throughs. So it could, there could be a, a line that says is not a drive-through. And I'm happy to add that as one of the conditions. That would be one thing to have. Because that would tend to cut out a business that would generate a lot of traffic. And it doesn't mean you can't be a business like that, but you should go through with a view. A review if you're gonna generate a lot of traffic. So I'm, we could add something like a not, is not a drive-through. Um, I'm happy with that.
I'm going to go back to, Barb has offered a suggestion that number fourteen would be. Not a formula business.
Let's start with that.
Do I have any support for that?
It will, I'm letting you just add that one of the reasons I'm suggesting this is because, um. I think that we have heard sentiment in the community. Concern about the, um. Uh, architectural and visual, um. Character, if you will, of formula businesses, uh, coming into Carolina. And that was part of why the formula business. Um, section was included in here in terms of what the design standards would be. And so. Just because it's a small, more, a small sized formula business building. Um, to me, that would not address the concerns that some residents have expressed of not wanting to have the visual. Of a typical formula business within the community. So that's why I would put it here because the site plan review is more of a public process. Than, uh, simply the code enforcement officer making decisions.
So we already have in the, your, uh, with, uh. Those businesses have to. Result to our building standards that we want.
Not, not if they're exempted.
Not if they're exempted with other things.
No, no, I couldn't quite hear what Bruce said, but, but I mean, so let me hear what Bruce had to say.
Bruce said, don't you already have something in there?
Well, so, so, so that, so to clarify, that is my intent, that, that, that section needs to be written. Article. Six would be rewritten so that that standard would apply to a formula business, even if it didn't go through review. Barb made a, an important and some more subtle point as in. When they are designing themselves not to look like every other dollar store, Starbucks, McDonald's. Uh, uh, you know, we're either tasking that of, of saying, yeah, this is enough, not like your other designs, that it's okay for Caroline. It's either being tasked to the code enforcement officer. Uh, you know, we're either tasking that of Pat, of saying, yeah, this is enough, not like your other designs, that it's okay for Caroline, it's either being tasked to the code enforcement officer. Or the review board, if it's tasked the review board, there is a hearing and the public is in essence gets to weigh in on it as well, so I think that's an important point she's made. But it's different than saying, oh, they can make themselves look just like they do elsewhere, because they can't. Are are that that standard should still apply, we should rewrite the section so that all those standards typically apply. Unless it very clearly requires a negotiation with the review board, in which case, yes, something exempted would not get that.
Okay, so why, let's, so I, everyone seems to, and yeah, we're all happy with number fourteen?
No, I'm not necessarily happy with number fourteen, but I'm I'm. Willing to hear, because again, I think a formula business would still be subject to our design standards, saying you can't look like a formula business, even if they met the other parts here.
Michelle?
Uh, I, well, I guess, uh, I agree with including number fourteen, the the other thing I would say is, um, I also agree with saying that it's not a drive-through. Uh, business, because even if it's not a formula business and it's a drive-through business, that could generate a lot of traffic and should undergo, uh. A review, and I think the thing about a review is that, as Barb said, it does involve the public. And I guess what disturbs me about this is that you're just relying on one person, the code enforcement officer, to make all these decisions. And you're excluding the public and, um, and I just think it's sometimes for some things, it's better to have more than one person weighing in on a decision.
And I'm I'm concerned that, I mean, for, like, you said, something that says, you know, this, the sign shall not be more than whatever, thirty-two square feet, that that's easy for someone to look at the sign and say, yep, that that meets, but there's a lot of these things in here that. Are not shells, but they're, you know, uh, uh, the code enforcement officer is not, does not have any authority to do anything. That's discretionary, they either say yes or no. And so I'm I'm concerned that you're putting a law on the code enforcement officer. Um, for all of, you know, I don't know how we, unless we reorganize this and say, these are all the things that shall be met, that are all, you know, dimensions or shells, and all of the things that. Are, um, you know, like channel letters, halo lit letters, or downcast externally lit letters are encouraged, we we take all of those out. And put them in another section. Um, right now, they're kind of mixed together, so I I would be very careful about putting too, too much discretion. On the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
But I think that what we are responding to is the fact that, you know, site plan review is a considerable hurdle for people to want to start a small business, and. You know, if we, you know, kind of parse it down to, you know, you can do something, it's gotta be really small and really small and really small and really doesn't impact anything. Uh, I I think, so so the question I think before the board is, are we gonna pursue, do we, do we want to do something like this? Or not? Like I'm saying, I think Michelle is saying no. Whatever people feel.
I'm inclined to say no, and the reason I'm inclined to say no is I think. That we are, we are, those things would come under ASPR and be one meeting. We have allotted meeting with the code enforcement officer beforehand, but then I think it does allow it up, uh, it does allow community review. And I think, uh, if we're saying that this is a problem for small businesses, I think. A small business reading that of the kind that you're describing would have no freaking idea what that meant. Because I don't know about four of those things. And would have to go and get a lot of information from somebody before I could go ahead, which would be pretty much the same as going through ASPR.
Yeah, it's a doubt because of course, it's a very difficult list.
Right. And then they would have to go to ASPR, my viewpoint, and I think you're saying maybe they'd be able to go through, but we still have the issues about design. And I don't particularly want to rewrite these design standards, so that's where I am.
Hello?
Anybody else, I don't, I don't.
Well, so Jean, let me, maybe, let me make sure I understand you clearly, so you would perhaps be. Uh, amenable to a list like this being used to direct something away from site plan and towards ASPR?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I agree with that also, I just think that there should be some kind of review, and it should be by more than one person, the code enforcement officer, and I think. Neighbors and the public should know, uh, if something's being put in like this, even if you're, it's so-called small thing.
So ASPR does not have a public notice requirement, as far as I know, is that right, Nan? There's certainly no public hearing is part of.
Yes, I believe that is right, let me look it up and just make sure.
I don't think it has a public notice. But it does have.
Um.
I mean, it's on the agenda for the review boards, and that's it's it's public, but there's no, uh, formal public hearing on a, on a abbreviated site plan review.
And there's also no seeker, that could be, that is an issue, that could be a very big issue.
Well, that's why we're making sure they have to say, at least they're not, they're not a type one action, right, I mean.
Yeah, but, uh, would a type one, well, even unlisted actions. Get seeker. So, um.
But remember, right now, we've been doing stuff like this in this town for how many decades, right, I mean, you know, so it it's probably a question of how big a step we're taking away from where we are now. I'm amenable to to having this be ASPR rather than than a total, um, exemption.
I I would, if that, if it were ASPR, if we added in the no, the non.
I've got not formula business and not a drive-through business, sir.
I would be fine with it having ASPR, but I'm not fine with it leaving it up to the code enforcement officer. I think it's just too much. And I know that the review board says that they think they're gonna be swamped, I actually don't think anybody's gonna be swamped. Um, but, um. You know, I could be wrong. But at least this, if these were all done. And then it was ASPR that looked at design standards, then I'd be happy with that. Anyone else want to voice their opinion?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I I agree with that as well.
Um, I hear Bill saying perhaps?
Yeah. Bill says perhaps.
Okay.
Bill's also reading the writing on the wall, so I'm 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 vote counting right now, so.
Hey, you're you're way better than.
Looks like I don't have the, I don't have the votes for a total exemption, but I might have them for ASPR.
You seem to be better at vote, vote counting than the person who wants to be majority leader.
Yeah.
Just saying.
I would actually prefer that you go ahead and revise the, uh, design standards, so they're the ones that apply to everything, and they're the ones that just apply to things that go through site plan.
Yeah, I I still think that, I agree.
I guess I I'm done revising, but I'm just gonna say.
I guess.
I mean, I was on the task force, and we worked on that for a year already, and that, so, you know.
Right, it's just that, you know, the beginning of the article six says, you know, things going through through site plan, you know, coming for the review board have these design standards, or, you know, what, I don't know, maybe it's Article five, I can't remember which. And it just seems to me that, you know. Eh, I don't know, that, you know, the design stance of design standards, and, you know, you should meet them if you're commercial, whether or not you're going in front of the review board. Now, I think almost everything will now, so, in one way or other.
I mean, if this becomes too, you you know, this can be looked at again, but, uh, I think if, you know, if you can't handle this, you shouldn't be starting a business, I mean.
Well, well, I mean, again, but there's a big difference, and I know, I know, and I understand that to Nan's point, we should not look at review as a negative thing, but there is a big difference in, say, the requirements for ASPR. In terms of like, the number of copies of things, and how formally you're writing documents have to be, and how formally your drawings have to be, and how far along. You know, if if you're, uh, a resident wanting to try a little business, is that the hurdle you want to put in front of them? So that's how I'm looking at it, I do get it, that if you're a developer who's doing this and going to a bunch of different towns, site plan review is is part of your business plan. But I'm wanting to make it a little easier for someone who wants to sort of get their feet wet for the first time, and ASPR is not too bad for that.
Yeah, I think ASPR isn't too bad for that either. So, um, Bill, you are putting this forward as a motion or not?
I I am putting it forward as a motion, I have added the formula business and not drive-through business. Uh, because I think those are two things, certainly the formula business, I felt that might indeed want the full public notice and hearing. Uh, you know, not just going from the review board, which ASPR requires, but the full site plan review, uh, for those things, so I'm willing to. You know, I think those were both offered, I'm going to put them on there, um, and so this is now the motion.
And what, and what does the top of it say, that they're, they're exempt from what?
Okay, so, yeah, so we now change that, um, so it's no longer exemption, so this stays, single and two-family and farm operations, I don't know, so. I don't know what this is gonna be.
Well, you could say further, um, the following, uh, for, um. Instead of being shall be exempt, shall be allowed, shall be, shall follow the ASPR process, if all of the following criteria are met.
Yeah. And I'll let you fix up some of the wording, but something like that, right, if you mean all the time, you're you're doing the ASPR process, you know, not not site plan review, something like that?
Yep. Okay, so I have that from Bill, does anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
That's. Thank you.
Can you scroll down, Bill?
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, what do you want to see?
Yeah, Bruce just wants to see the list, one through fifteen.
Okay. So I think we've actually had a discussion before the motion, which does make me insane, but there we go. Um. Yeah, but it's still, it's insane, um, hearing, is there any further discussion?
Uh, well, one of the things that this was gonna do, before we made it part of the ASPR, we're gonna let smaller family, multi-family residential projects go ahead without. And that now would. That that's gonna be the end of that discussion, right, is that, is that kind of.
I'll go up to the top again and.
Right, no, no, he's right, so so, right, because this was gonna say, if you had four units, you were a P, for, you know, permitted in any kind of review whatsoever. And that is different now. Because it's only single and two-family that are totally exempt.
Right.
Well, your use table already says that multifamily dwellings have to have a special use permit, so you you might wanna, you, if you don't want. If you want to exempt small multifamily dwellings, you have to go back and revisit that use table.
Okay, so that's.
Make another category for small multifamily structures.
Okay. So with that, all in favor of this, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Bruce? Bruce said aye. Okay, that's passed. I think, I think that thumb was an aye.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is passed, thank you very much. Um, the reader's box, Bill has not finished, and he's going to work on that, and then he's going to send it out to us by email, right?
Yes, um, and, yeah, I guess that's, I mean, let me just, I let me show one thing, just to see if this was sort of Ernie had in mind. Uh, in part, because I'm fine doing that, and let's see, where where is that? It should be. Oh, come on now, I know I launched that application. Yeah, PowerPoint is there.
I don't know, but while you're looking with that.
All right, yeah, yeah.
An application?
Yeah, I I.
How do people feel about adding a cemetery definition to the thing, and putting cemetery center? So Nan, you're gonna give us a definition for cemeteries, which I bet you can phone. And, uh. And by the way, New York is now allowing human composting.
I heard that.
If it does not mean throwing your body out back, it means they put you into a, into a vessel. And you decompose, and then your body gets to be returned to the soil, rather than ashes.
I'm looking to see what's, his motorcycle way in his front, and he's got a sheet, and he's, you know, breathing the other, that's what she wanted. You see, you could do that in New York State?
Now you can do that in New York State. You think before, yes, but this is actually different, this is human composting as a definition. So with that, um, all in favor of the cemetery use being added, and where are cemeteries, I think they're in ag rural, right?
Hmm.
New one, you want to put a new cemetery in a hamlet? Well.
It's perfect, they were always next to the church.
That's my question, but where do you want to have them? A place? I guess, um, cemeteries must have to come on to some New York State. Uh.
Church or kind of anyway.
Yeah. So, I'm hearing people are seeming to be willing to have them anywhere that the law allows. Yeah, okay. And if if Nan runs into something that says. That the law allows some really weird crap, you'll let us know, right, Nan? Okay.
I will have to research that, I don't know.
Jean?
Uh huh.
In that case, with the botting?
Well, yes, the botting, okay, so, uh, we have said yes for cemeteries, everyone's in favor of that. Uh, we're going back to the, uh. The reader's aid box.
Yeah, I mean, this is cruder than I even remembered, but all right, let's let me, uh.
That's because you've had too much sugar.
Yeah, all right, so so one of, so the idea was to have at least a couple different examples of. Developing a lot, which, you know, started out as a twenty acre parcel.
Right.
Into a conservation, you know, it's in the ag rural, you're gonna break it up into at least seven pieces, so you gotta follow a conservation design. And one of those was, or you said, you know. A lot of developers might want to just make one or two big parcels that have conservation easements on them. And that'd be a simple way to meet the fifty percent conserves, that my first drawing is that. And then the second drawing that I'm want to work on is one that maybe works more from the more fundamental conservation subdivision design idea. Um, to show something where the land is held in common, maybe, or at least as a central area or something, I hadn't really decided how to do that, so I need to look. Back at some stuff and then get Nan to fix it, but any rate, this is sort of the estate lot picture that Ernie sketched out, where maybe there's two large lots, each about six acres, this is twenty acres, you gotta conserve ten acres, so you have a six acre lot. They put the house over here, and this area over here is got a conservation easement on it with the Figureless Land Trust or wherever. And then similarly over here, there's the house down here, and here's a conservation easement on this part. Uh, and then you have a bunch of other lots that were developed, and all of these lots have residence on it. Is that the kind of thing you're thinking of, Ernie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Look at that, he's become a landscape architect now.
Yeah.
Fine, excellent.
All right, I will, and then I think there should be text that goes with it, and, you know, uh, I'll grant it, and that can fix it.
Great, so now, so Bill is gonna work on this, send it off to Nan, we will include it as a reader's aid box for conservation subdivisions. Um, I have three more things. Uh, multifamily dwelling, this was from res to commercial, Nan, and that we've already discussed that clearly.
Yep.
Um. And Ernie, about density, I think we've discussed this, right?
Yes.
Great. I had one more thing, which was height of signs, some, this was brought up at the last.
Yeah.
Public information meeting, saying that somewhere it's limited this to, or like the sign should be like ten feet, and somebody said. Truck drivers can't see that, it's too low.
Yeah, the ten feet is in the design standards, the commercial design standards.
So the suggestion was that that is inappropriate because, um. Trucks can't see it, so.
Then, then ask for someone to read that the, that the design, I, I can't see. If they read feelings, I mean, you know, you have to read.
Okay, so I have no idea how high those are, okay, well, good, so we've discussed that. Well, actually, they can't read speech on the phone. If you've noticed that, okay, that was the last thing that I had on my list. So. We, this is great, because we now have a half an hour to discuss our next steps. So I, no one else has given me any other topic to discuss. Uh, what we therefore have to do is think about. Looking at the final version, which Nan is gonna make these corrections in, send it out to us, I'm gonna put it up as a Google Doc, I'm gonna send it popping. To Bruce, because you have a hard time with Google Docs. Everyone is gonna read it again, and if you find anything that is odd, or you think needs. Changing, you are gonna note that in the Google Doc, over the course of, I hope, about a week. Then what has to happen is we have to, if we are all in agreement, we have to vote. To move this forward. And one of the questions I asked you today was. Is there anything you've seen in this so far that would keep you from voting? To move this forward to a public hearing? So let me know if there's an issue. You don't have to like say it right now, but you gotta at least email me by tomorrow. Okay?
But Jean, don't forget, though, that what goes to the town board is not just this. There's a, there's the report that goes along with it, that. Kind of summarizes what you've done and. The work that you did, the mapping and all of that, that kind of gives the background of how you got to the recommendation.
Great. So is the public hearing on that entire document or just on?
Yes. No, on the entire document.
Entire report. So where are we on the report, Nan?
I have to work on it. I guess. So I mean, I have to, you know, gotta go back and recreate all of the steps that we've done. Um, it doesn't have to be. You know, twenty pages long, but it has to be, you know, even a bullet list of all of the milestones that in the the work that you did.
Right.
Um, so I think you and I can work on that. Um, to to pull that together and um. I do have an outline. Uh, I have a um, more of a, yeah, it's basically an outline form still. Um. But. I have to go back and I think there was something, hold on, let me just open that file up. Um.
I sent you a list of some things. That we had, you know, that we had talked about.
Yeah, so um. So the report has to have a formal transmittal letter. It has to have, um. I'll probably have to get a copy of the resolution that, or whatever the town board. Uh, used to create the zoning commission. Um, we have to describe the public meetings and the hearings. That's easy enough to do. We have to describe the um. Uh, actions taken by the commission. Um, and um, copy of the recommended zoning regulations. Um, a copy of a resolution by which the commission adopted the final report. So that would go in. At the end. So you would have the preliminary report, then the public hearing on the preliminary report. Then you have to decide whether you would make any changes. And then the final report goes to the town board with. You guys have to have a formal resolution that would be, you know, whereas and therefore, you know. That kind of resolution would have to be done in a formal way to transmit this to the town board.
Okay. So um, Mark, you'll send Nan a copy of that resolution.
Uh, the zoning commission formation resolution, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it is now February third. Um. Really? It's terrible.
Time's not flying that fast.
No one, no one speaks to my husband. Um, so. Uh, let us see, I, Nan, maybe you and I can talk on Thursday or Friday of this week about.
Okay.
I think what I think needs to go into the report and I can fill out, we can flesh out a few things for you. Um. Let us think and I think that you've got this, the draft, in pretty good shape, except for the things we talked about tonight.
Right. Yes, it's up to date, except for tonight's work.
Okay, so I think by tomorrow, perhaps you could send out the report or by Thursday. And we could all do one more reading and make sure that we're happy with that. And then we could look at this other report when it comes out. And it's not gonna be that long. It's gonna be. We we all believe in the bullet point, right? Okay. So that would mean that sometime, like if we met in two weeks on like the seventeenth. And perhaps we could by then. Say, yes, this is fine and we can move it forward. That would then give our, you and our attorney. Have to post a public notice, right? Has to be printed in papers. It's a public hearing. It has to be printed in the papers.
The notice.
The notice.
Yeah, we do, we would do that through the clerk's office. Yeah.
Yeah, clerk clerked it.
So if that happened, and I think it has to be published for ten days is my red delay is mine. So you have to have it in the paper and then it has to be there for ten days. Which means.
Ten days before the hearing date.
Right, which means that by um, something like. The thirty first of of um. Of February, of January. Are you messing with me? Something like that week of the thirtieth, we could have a public hearing. So let us now discuss what that public hearing would look like.
Okay, so Jean, let me just interrupt for a second. So I'm trying to track the the timing here. Um, yes, there's a ten day legal notice, but but in terms of when you actually expected. Our final-ish draft to be available to the public. Versus the public hearing, how much time do you or do, and do we think we ought to give the public to look at this?
Two weeks.
Okay, and does that seem feasible?
So you're talking thirty, you're not talking.
Well, we're talking if we were able to actually like on the eighteenth. Put things up, which I hope to God is the case. That would bring us to the twenty eighth or the twenty ninth or the thirtieth of the month. Um, somewhere in there.
We can have to read it myself.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have, they're gonna have this. By tomorrow and the report is. It's not even gonna be ten days. I think.
Oh, so you're expecting, no, because we need to look at what Nan produces now.
Yeah.
Before we put that on the web.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And so January seventeenth is what's being proposed as our meeting to discuss Nan's draft report.
Right. This draft, final saying yes on this. And also.
And the report.
Which I think we could probably get done in a week. And then you'd have a week to look at the draft report.
So and and Nan, are you comfortable with getting a draft of the report part of this in seven or eight, nine days from now?
Um. Yeah, I. No sooner than that, because I, you know, if I have all of the information at hand, it's not gonna take a lot to put that. Kind of summary of your work together. Um.
I've already made notes, so I've got a bunch of notes.
Okay, so so that means then you would want the full report from me by like the. Twelve?
Yeah.
The ten?
Let's say the twelve, the twelve would be fine. That's that's five days and it's probably a ten page report. Which means if we were able to put out the public notice on the eighteen. We could have a meeting. Starting the week of the thirtieth.
Well.
Starting like, starting February first.
Starting February first.
Starting February first. But, you know, and the question is. What's that meeting look like? Because we need to think about that. Um. I have to say the last, I mean, during the. The insanity of the joint. Um.
Hybrid meeting?
Hybrid meeting, that is difficult. It was really difficult to make it work. And um. All of the things that how we set that up have gone totally out of my head. I don't know about yours. So I would prefer. That we do two. Um, back to back. One on Zoom where people can speak. We also say very clearly in the thing that we. Um, accept written documents. And the reason I say that is. No one's gonna have more than two or three minutes, whatever we decide tonight. To speak. And so I think a lot of people, just as at public hearings everywhere, people give a brief statement and they pass something in. So I think it should say that. And I think we could have one. Um, here or elsewhere, if we have it. Here, it could also be on Zoom for people to see. But if we have it elsewhere, it doesn't have to be. And then we have one on its own.
So I assume you're you're taught, you're planning on this being a formal. Public hearing where there's not a discussion and it's not a question answer thing. You just, people get up and say what they want to say and you say thank you and then the next person does that.
Exactly. That's what, that's what's required by law. Bruce?
People are gonna have people handing in questions.
Not questions, comments.
So. We're gonna have to have. In time to respond.
You don't respond. There's no response. It's we respond, yes. If people sent in something, we would then have to look at those. And then that's before we decide to make any more changes. Before we give it into the town board. So we would have to have one more meeting after this, for sure. Yeah. But there's no, we don't respond to them. We just have to read them. Um. So people could do that by sending email, which I would then send out to people, though I think in this case it would be better to have it sent to the town clerk. And have the town clerk send it out to us. As a more formal thing than sending it to me. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's what I think. Or to deliver it in writing to the town clerk. I just, I want the formal reading to be there. Um.
To submit comments.
To submit comments to the town clerk. Yeah, not to, not to me. Um. So with that, that's what we're gonna start working towards. Where do you think we should have this public meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. Yeah.
So, I mean. I, in many ways, liked the hybrid meeting that we did. Um, and so I would have tended to advocate for a hybrid meeting. Uh, for this, but I I I hear your objections and I I is much simpler to do a Zoom thing and then an in-person thing where you don't have to worry about that. Um, and I will be gone for a significant portion, could not help with the. Setup. And so that may be a factor as well with not having a hybrid meeting, but I actually think that would be nice if we could.
I think it would be lovely, except for how. It was just a lot. It was really a lot. I mean, borrowing all the equipment, hauling all the equipment over, setting the equipment up. It was a lot.
So is is an all Zoom meeting allowed legally for a public hearing?
Nan, is that allowed?
Um, you would still have to have the quorum. You know, it's still have to be in person, in a quorum in person. So in in essence, that would still have to be in the town, you know, whether you have it in the town hall or not, you still have to have the quorum.
So I, so what I would say then, Nan, is that you have to essentially run a hybrid meeting for the Zoom session, because you guys would have to be at the town hall. For sure. Um, that would limit the amount of people from the outside that could come in and that might be okay, because then you have a different. In-person meeting that's in a large venue. Um, that might be one way to work this with the simplest amount of hardware. Um. And then that larger venue. Uh, could be the fire hall, since good internet would not be required. It could be. I don't know, could be the Speedsville Community Center.
Well, we could do um. Two nights here. We could do two nights. Like a Tuesday and a Wednesday, or a Wednesday and a Thursday here. Have people come in and be here in person and also have a few on Zoom at the same time.
I think so. It's the last meeting you should have.
So you would suggest that if you have the, which can be a fire hall, is the largest venue? Okay.
Another option would be to go with two or three successive nights. People basically would have to sign up. You'd be taking, I mean, whatever the capacity is there. And you you run it for as many nights as were required to, but you know, then you have to know how many people are gonna come or they have to sign up ahead of time. I don't know. That that doesn't work.
There is no requirement that you fit everyone's needs. And I personally would, I'm not gonna say that. We're gonna sit there for five nights if people are just gonna continue coming out. That's. That's beyond, I mean, people have the opportunity to submit stuff in writing. We've had any number of meetings. We've had more meetings than any other place I can imagine. Um. I think, uh. Let me just say, no, I'm not doing. Like, no way on God's free earth am I gonna sit there for five nights. I'm willing to do two. I'm willing to do two, two and a half or three hour nights. And I think we've given people every opportunity to speak. No. I am, you know, we have privilege before and you can talk to me afterwards, but no, so um.
Why raise my hand?
I know, good. Uh, so um. Does anyone else disagree with me? I mean, do people want to do this forever?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I do in a certain sense. I think this is an important and a big step for the town and I personally would. You know, sit there and listen to every last person who wants to say something, but I respect those who don't want to do that. Um, and I'm not gonna be there in person, so it's easier for me because I can sit here, you know, normally in normal times I would. I would come out as many nights as I needed to. But um, I'm not gonna ask that of of other folks.
Yeah, it's not normal times.
Yeah.
And that is an issue for me, too. I don't, you know, I don't relish being in a large public space with a lot of people. Um, so. And we have to have, um. I think that. We have to try to have everyone in attendance. Either by Zoom or by um. Or in person. I just, I think that's really a requirement.
So I have an extended out of country absence in there, which I will get you the dates. Um, and so. The first week of February falls within the time I'd be gone. And uh, I, so if it's really important that everyone be here, I'll tell you when I will be in town and we'll change that. But um, I don't know if everyone is, I mean, I would certainly review the tape. So I don't know if there's a legal requirement that we all be present.
No.
There's no legal requirement, there's a legal requirement for quorum. But I certainly would encourage that we have everyone there as we can.
So would you, for that typically show up in person, be able to show up in person with the bigger crowd?
I can.
I can.
I will send out something tomorrow asking when people are going to be available and in which space. And we will find, try to, you know, nail down some possible times. Um. You know, I think that we have said, you know, that you've listened to every single person who would come. But the reality is our meetings have really, we have listened to every person who came in the amount of time that we've had. Um, so. I think we've done that. Um, but that doesn't mean I'm willing to sit there for five nights in a row. Um, or even spaced out. I'm just, I just think that. We have done. More than is required by law and by goodwill. So um.
I would just ask if you're gonna do two nights or however many nights you're gonna do, um, if Mark, you could. Check with your attorney, because. I don't know whether these would be two separate public hearings or one public hearing that's adjourned. One night and then restarted the next night. So we just want to make sure we have the wording of the legal notice right for that.
Okay.
Okay, good point. I I think it is the latter. I think it's an adjournment and a restart, but it's a good, I agree. We should double check.
Okay, good. Um. I think we're good. So let us assume that we are meeting on the seventeenth. I will check if everybody's about attendance tomorrow at that meeting and about some future dates. That we will, at that time, I hope. Be looking at this document, the draft that um. And it's gonna make a few changes in it was made tonight. We're gonna send it back out and I'm gonna put it up as a Google Doc for people to make any comments on. Um, and see if there's anything else that needs to get changed. Then we will, from that and before that meeting, Nan will also, Nan and I will work on a final report. And send that along. Um.
So one of the things, I just had a question for you all. Um, you know, the more we read these documents, you know, you often find grammar or typos or things like that that we've all missed. Uh, can I go ahead and change things that are just, you know, typo type things or do you want to review all of those things?
Please, please.
Please.
I'll try and catch as many as I can, but it's amazing how many times you read it and then you still find things.
Well, it's because we've written it. When, and you cannot really edit things you've written yourself. That's why God made editors. And you just can't. I mean, you don't see them. So, thank you. Um, let us, let us finish this in, let's say. Twenty twenty-two. No, twenty twenty-three. No, March. No, don't worry. No, okay?
Yeah.
Good. We are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. This is a, you know, understatement at this point, but. Thank you, everybody, this is a, you know, understatement at this point, but I, you know, can't express my appreciation enough, so.
Nan, I will, thank you, thank you very much, Mark, and Nan, I will email you, um, early in the morning.
Very good, alright.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
And Pete, you may now say something.
Hey, I'll wait, like, you talk to your brother, if I might, for a couple minutes.
You may.